Good evening, welcome to the June 21st, 2016 meeting of the Middle School Committee. I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7 o'clock on Comcast Channel 8, over Horizon Channel 37. Start with roll call vote to my vote, call for attendance to my left. Denise?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Nancy?
Present.
Steve?
Present.
Jen will be absent tonight. You'll do breakfast today with her last day. Congratulations to them on that. And you know, let's teach your back to table. All right? Jody, is there anybody signing for open session?
Yes, there are six people.
Okay. You can take them in order of how they signed in.
Kathy Smith? Hi, my name is Kathy Smith. I live on McKay Avenue. And I'm here representing my neighborhood. We went to the meeting last Wednesday where you chose the site for the new elementary school. And you chose option four, which is right here, which brings a lot of the traffic down McKay, Monroe, and Park. And at the meeting on April 13th that we attended, a lot, everyone chose the other site, which is a little bit more further over, like at the hill, with the parking where the Clyde Brown school will be demolished. So we're very concerned about the parking. There are several people that are very upset. We have started a petition, just asking you to reconsider, looking at option three again versus option four. I think, and we have several things that we have, but I was told by the town to come in and just let you know that we are having a petition to ask you to reconsider or just look at option three and option four, if you could give us some more information about the traffic. We're looking at about 500 cars up and down our roads. We have very small roads, McKay and Monroe are very small. I was chosen because I like the schools, my kids go to the school, I'm very happy with the schools, to try to be real, try to have an open dialogue so we can just discuss it. We have some very strict concerns about the traffic, going up and down the road, expanding park road, putting parking lots inside the Little League Field area, across the street from Monroe, there's a house on Monroe, there'll be a 51, 51 space parking lot with lights right across the street from her versus Clyde Brown, which really wouldn't affect any neighbors per se, the lightage or the spillage from the lights. So we're just letting you know, we will be at the Board of Selectment meeting Monday, we will be at the joint meeting. I don't know when that will be, I've heard the 28th, I'm not sure if that's the correct date or not. Many of us are for the school, we really would like to express our serious concerns about the traffic. That's our main concern. So we're not against the new school. Some of us are, some of us aren't, but we'd like you to look at possibly the option three, which puts the parking lot where the Clyde Brown is now, when it gets torn down. So I was told to just let you know that the petition is coming. As a courtesy, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Riley?
Hi, I'm Lynn Riley, Bo Street. And I come to respond to the concern around the lessening of the hours for the support staff at the Clyde Brown, the adjustment counselor and behavioral person. Those positions are just invaluable. I've used them, I've needed them three different times for three completely different situations. And the thought of there not being that support there full-time is extremely concerning to me. I think that that only spills over to issues that we will then be getting them back again full-time as we have in the past when this has happened. And I can't say that I've dissected the budget and understand it all, but I can say that I have grave concern over positions like that being lessened in terms of what they do now. I think that, again, I've had three different children need help in three completely different ways, and I can't imagine if one of them had had to wait a day for that person to be at the school, it would have ended up being a much different situation than it ended up being. Some of them were situational, some of them were ongoing, but it was invaluable what they gave to them, it was invaluable what they gave to us, it was invaluable what they gave to the classrooms to support their success there. So I would ask to reconsider that, because I have a large concern over positions like that being lessened. So, thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Muscatello?
Hi, Phil Muscatello, my county, 210 Ridge Street. We're here to echo Lynn's concern, and you know, similar to her. We do not know where we would be as a family, if it wasn't for the work of the folks that you see in the audience behind you, the special ed department. What I'd like to know is to dive into and dissect a little bit, if possible, how you came to this decision. I know from my own experience, watching some of the folks that we've worked with, we seem really busy all the time. And considering that you're possibly taking away a very scarce resource to a very vulnerable population, is scary to us as parents who've been through it. I can imagine someone new, considering the school district, might be in similar situations to what we were in. And, you know, we could go on and on about the work they did, and I probably could for, you know, three hours. So I guess my question to you is, and again, I'm not super familiar with the process or the procedures for these meetings, but I'd really like to understand the, basically the structure or the framework you use to decide how to cut back the hours that these folks were, are going to be working, relative to their case sizes or relative to the vulnerable population in our school district.
So, oh, because I know probably everybody after this is most likely on the same topic, so let me kind of go over a couple of things. One, one is the formality. I know because I saw on social media, but that a formal discussion of the reductions in our budget is not on our agenda. We weren't planning on taking it up, and there are procedural open meeting laws as to what can be discussed in open meeting and notification of posting things and so forth. So, there's that piece. So, but in terms of procedure, talk about a process, but we'll go through a little bit of leniency on where we go with that, but just as a point of order, this wasn't on our We can't, as a board in open session, talk about individual personnel matters. So to have a discussion about an individual position in open session are, we're not allowed to, those are things that have to be done through a negative session. The process of evaluating the budget and making a budget process, the formal budget process, starts in January, when we first get the, first get revenue estimates from the state. We then have multiple meetings, including formal budget presentations, both at a meeting here, as well as at the Finance Committee. We publish online what our proposed budget is. So all of it is completely transparent, all through the months of January through when town meeting occurs. This year it actually happened in May, some years it just bumped till June. We were facing, coming into this year, as our first requested budget was a $900,000 increase over what we had spent last year. Part of that increase, half of that increase was because in the fiscal '16 budget, we had used one-time money, about $427,000 out of reserve funds, to in essence maintain all services, not specific to a program, just across the board. We plugged the budget with $427,000 of money that we knew we weren't guaranteed to get back. We took it from reserve funds. So we were starting with a $900,000 increase that we needed to make up. From the town and through the formulation of allocation of funds, we, the school budget is increasing $537,000 in the town. So that takes the 900 down, we had a $400,000, the actual number was $375,000, and now gap that we had to close. We, as a committee, will turn to the administration and come through and ask for a recommendation on what reductions or reorganizations can be absorbed. We are presented a list, we evaluate the list, we were presented a list of well above, because we have to plan for multiple scenarios. We had a list greater than the $375,000. We ended up stopping at $290,000 in reorganization and reductions. We decided as a committee that the remaining 80,000 to 90,000, we were gonna, combination of dip into a reserve fund that was already too low from the 400s we had taken here before, or just kind of hope for the best, and grants and things of that nature. So, in the list of what ended up being roughly $230,000 of reduction were these two hour reductions, as well as a reduction of a full-time elementary school teacher, as well as hours from the art program, as well as aides in preschool, across the gamut. Those are the culmination of the reductions. None of the reductions are based on a desire or lack of importance on the roles that they create. There was a gap that needed to be closed. Between salaries and tuitions and expenses, the special education comprises 19% of our total operating budget. And, I know we're focusing on, and questions have been on kind of reductions that have been highlighted, but as, between those elements, salaries and expenses, between the FY '16 budget and the FY '17 budget, the reduction to those combined items in our operating budget is a 1% reduction, $27,000. And while there are reductions in total dollars at the Clyde Brown school, they are partially offset by increases at the middle school and the high school in dollars, as well as an increase in the expense line. So while we were facing having to reduce our requested budget by 2.6% overall to solve that, $375,000, the special education focused programs only went down by 1%. So, that's the process, and I think what I can tell you is there wasn't a disproportional reduction to any one specific program or targeted program or element of the system as a whole. We had, we took and worked with the administration to take a look at the entire area and the entire district to figure out how we could come up with, or what we would need to do to solve for the gap that we have. So, again, I hope that gives a kind of an outline of the process, as well as some of the more concrete overall kind of 10,000-foot view of the budget and where special education costs fit in and how the relationship worked. And we can't get into specific positions or value one over another, personnel matters that we just can't discuss in a position. But hopefully that gives some information into the process.
Is that your final recommendation, the cuts, or the?
We do not have anything on our agenda of readdressing the, and evaluating the budget that was approved at town meeting. We, as a process, always are evaluating and if needs occur for areas where we don't need, throughout the whole year, we are constantly discussing, you know, where needs arise that maybe we didn't have, and if we have to look at readjusting throughout the year, we do it all the time. We do it if a new student, new student moves in, or we have staff changes, or it's a, there is no finite period of time where the budget in and of itself, or the inner workings of what's going on on a day-to-day basis, can't be evaluated or changed. Total dollars, we have a limit of what we can do, but as needs arise and change, we are within our food to adjust them as we, and primarily identify through the administration of where we may need to recalibrate if necessary.
You had mentioned, I think, something, you mentioned that low enrollment, or lower enrollment was part of the reason for this? So is there any information on the change in enrollment, and from the existing to, you know, the coming year, to get a sense of, you know, what kind of margin aren't we looking at here? So as you mentioned, if, you know, child with special needs did move into the district, you know.
So, I don't have kind of, off of my key metrics on, you know, ratios and things. What I can tell you is, in conversations with our Personnel Director, Personnel, Pupils Services, Dr. Sue Ann Marks today, she confirmed that all of the services that we're currently providing, and all the services that are available, will be available. We'll be meeting all of the IEPs that we need, even with the proposed budget. All, there's no services that are going to be missing. Yeah. If there's, again, you come in and all of a sudden there's higher services than what people plan, then we address that and deal with it. And we do that every year, both ways. Any questions? Agnes? Kim, it's a comment.
Audrey Noonan? Hi, I'm Audrey Noonan, I live at 30 Baltimore Street. I'm co-chair for this bed pack. And I have the same concern that their parents have voiced here today, especially with regard to the adjustment counselor and VCPA. My biggest concern is with the reduction in hours. I did talk to Dr. Marks today, she assured me the same thing that she assured you, that the IEPs are all covered, which is a good thing. But my concern is, these are two positions that are behavioral in nature, and there is no way to know when you're gonna have a crisis. So how do you choose what hours someone is going to work? A student isn't allowed to have a crisis for half of the day, but is allowed to have a crisis for the other half? What is the backup plan for this going forward? Has this been discussed as far as, and I understand you can't discuss individual positions and staffing, et cetera, but I think when you're talking about special education needs, this is a very real concern. These are not kids that have issues on a timeline, or on a schedule. And we certainly, this is a service that everyone in this bed pack definitely has utilized at some point. And they, I mean, Millis does a great job with our kids, and we love the school, obviously. But the point is, you know, the kids just need these services, and it's not something that you can plan for.
I agree with the things that can't be planned for, I think, at any point. But, I don't, first one, I don't know if there's an alternate schedule that's been established, or I know some of the workings, you know, transitioning, some of the things that can be done, not the out-of-class work, but some in-school training, or just as staff. I think, I think it's, that is something that has to be managed by the administration in how they, how it is conducted on a day-to-day basis, and how they organize the schedule of having the staff level that we're probably putting to the budget.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that there's not a backup plan at this point?
No, you're hearing that I don't know what the backup plan is.
Okay.
And that the administration will need to coordinate a schedule as to ensure that there's coverage or a plan of how things are gonna be handled. I don't know whether that's been completely vetted out or not, but I believe that there would be through them. Is there a, covers that?
Is there a way to put it on the agenda for future meetings that we can discuss it, or so that parents can be aware of it, like what that backup plan is, or in some way, shape, or form, for the school to provide that information to us?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we could put that on a future meeting, maybe one of the meetings over the summer, before school starts, as to what the final kind of outline of coverage and program is. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
The last person is Matthew McPhee.
Hi, everyone, thanks for allowing me to chat. My name's Matthew McPhee, and I live at 96 Oakmont Street. So I just want to share that I echo the concerns of all the parents who've spoken tonight. I won't repeat their concerns, but I just want to emphasize that I agree with all of them. And so instead, I wonder if I could ask a slightly different line of questioning about pragmatics, and how the approved level of funding, and the approved staffing levels for FY '17 with respect, in particular to behavioral analysis, are expected to affect students who are receiving ABA services at the school, and as well as in the formal special education process, review process, which I believe is set to begin in the coming year, and how well those decisions align with, or perhaps not, the goal, I believe, of keeping more students in the district with special education needs, which is less costly than it's in the amount.
So I think as we mentioned earlier, there's going to be no change in the delivery of public services for the students, or the evaluation of students for additional services based on the established staff counts.
Will there not be less supervision in the case, though, that they have a full-time position, they used to have that in the case, supervision of students receiving ABA services?
In, on a day-to-day, like the aides that cover them?
No, in terms of actually structuring the programs, that the aides are trained and qualified to execute, but not necessarily under the license or to actually craft themselves.
So you're saying, is there supervision building to allow for the services to be provided?
I guess supervision in that context, and the role of the VCPA in particular, is more about a board certification and having the necessary training and education, and having passed the board to be able to design a program which actually effectively helps those students who use the services. Parochial professions can execute them. And there are recommended levels of supervision and case load, and may well be that there are sort of codes of ethics that I wonder, just in practice, how going from a full-time to a half-time position affects the recommended best practices for what that level of case load looks like, and other elements of the code of ethics which might be in place, in terms of effectiveness and being able to fulfill that mission.
The, it is unusual for a district the size of Millis to have a full-time VCPA. Many larger districts have less than a full-time. Based on all the information, a .5 is sufficient to supervise and deliver all the services that are needed currently.
And are there either best practices, or any examples from other districts, perhaps some of those that you're referencing, where outcomes are measuredly positive at that level of stopping? Is it, can you comment on what that ratio is supposed to be in that scenario?
I'm not aware of a certain ratio, but I do know that we have within the proposed budget adequate services, adequate personnel to cover all the needs currently.
And can you comment on how you feel the, all of the approved changes within the budget might affect our special education formal review process in the coming year? Are those likely to help us in our goals of scoring higher, on moving from level two to level one, perhaps, and closing some of the gaps, and casting that formal review in the way that we'd like?
I'm not sure, this isn't a, this wasn't a decision, and isn't a decision done to, because we think it is an exponentially better model. It's done to ensure that we're providing the services that we are entrusted to provide across an entire district. And so, I guess, if your question is, do you think this is a better outcome than having not reduced it? No. I'd rather have another $400,000, and we wouldn't have to have any of the competitions. But that's not where we're living. So where we're living in this budget process is that we are ensuring that we are providing the ser, all the services in the best manner possible in the meantime.
So, I guess it makes sense that we're not saying that a reduction in these needs would necessarily improve outcomes, but are we concerned that they will not, are we concerned that they may reduce outcomes? Are we concerned that they may affect our performance on the special education review process?
So, based on the information we have, we are going to continue to provide the services that we have been at the level that we've been at. So, if we are providing the services to the students we have at the level that we have, then, you know, I don't know all the metrics on the review, so, could we hit the DAMN ratio? I don't know. But as long as we are providing the services that we need to, that's what we're looking for.
And to your question about the finances, I wonder, are there opportunities for parents to assist in that process, either with fundraising in the future, or other means, grant writing, any kinds of support? I'm curious if you could give parents advice, if you want to help, how they might help close the funding gaps.
So, closing the funding gaps, the school is a nonprofit organization that can pay private donations. I know, I'm sure, that through the district and through the administration. I know, I'm sure, that through the district and through the administration, we have grant, many grant writing processes in place. And then it becomes a regulation through, mainly through property taxes and state funding. Our increase in state funding from, over the last few years, has been less than 1%. So, you know, it's very difficult in, in the town government to have one of your revenue streams be flat and others be limited while other expense, while your mandated expenses and contractual expenses are exceeding the revenue threshold. And the only levers that we have are over-ask and lobbying for additional funding from the state, which we do have, but private donations and grants have been added.
So last question would be, should the funding circumstances change either for the current, the coming year or for subsequent years? Could you comment on whether or not some levels of staffing might be changed?
Absolutely. We evaluate it and there have been times where funding levels haven't changed, but needs have changed. And we have been forced to make choices of moving money from one place to another because a need has required it and it may mean, instead of, you know, we've, so we need, we've had to move it over here and therefore what that means is we're losing a service on this side. But yeah, we go through it every year, at least quarterly if not more.
That's it.
Thanks for following. Talk about, you're able to accept donations. If we give donations, are we allowed to specify specifically what is useful?
Yeah.
So I can say, generally speaking, it has to go to this feature for this position?
I would have to look at how specific it could be.
Okay.
It can be, I know it could be for a, for a program or for an education service. I will need to reach out to our legal counsel, we're going, people, if the idea is to start privately funding teacher salaries, I actually think that there's conflict of interest laws that would preclude that, where if individual parents were in essence subsidizing a teacher's salary or, or a provider, or any employee's salary, I'd be pretty confident that that would get struck down in code of ethics laws, just like teacher deaths, like for over $50. So I think that would get struck down there. To make a donation for a program, that would be fine, but it can't be as targeted as a, as a specific teacher or position.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to action items. Consideration to approve the school committee meeting minutes for May 24th, 2016.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to the Senate to approve the school committee meeting minutes for May 24th, 2016.
They moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, because Denise wasn't here, so she has to abstain. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure parents. Next, we have consideration to have third reading of policy 1.16 for non-discrimination policies.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Powell.
I make a motion that we do the third reading of policy 1.16, non-discrimination. The Millis Public Schools has a responsibility to overcome insofar as possible any barriers that prevent children from achieving their potential regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, natural, national origin, sexual orientation, age of disability. The public school system will do its part. It is committed to equal opportunity for all individuals, including in a safe school environment that allows all students equal access and opportunities to all of the district's programs and activities, including academic programs, educational support services, and enrichment activities. It is the policy of the Millis Public Schools to maintain a learning and working environment that is free from harassment, violence, or discrimination based on actual or perceived race, color, creed, religion, national, national origin, sex/gender, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or age, collectively known as the actual or perceived protected class status. This commitment to the community is affirmed by the following statements that the school committee intends to: One, promote the rights and responsibility of all individuals as set forth in the state and federal constitutions, pertinent legislation, and applicable judicial interpretations. Two, encourage positive experiences and human values for children, youth, and adults, all of whom have differing personal and family characteristics and who come from various socio-economic, racial, and ethnic groups. Three, work toward a more inclusive society and enlist the support of individuals as well as groups and agencies, both private and governmental, in such an effort. Four, use all appropriate communication and action techniques to air and reduce the grievances of individuals and groups. Five, carefully consider in all decisions made within the school system the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on the human relations aspects of all segments of society. And six, initiate a process of reviewing policies and practices of the school system in order to achieve, to the greatest extent possible, the objectives of the state. The committee's policy of non-discrimination will extend to students, staff, and the general public, the general public and individuals with whom it does business. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and course of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, natural, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability. It will be a violation of this policy for any student, district employee, or third party based on a student's, employees, or third party's actual or perceived protected class status to: One, harass a student, district employee, or third party through conduct or communication, e.g., physical, verbal, graphic, or written; or two, two, inflict, threaten to inflict or attempt to inflict violence; or, or two, three, discriminate against a student, district employee, or third party. This policy applies to all the academic and non-academic, for example, athletic and extracurricular programs of the district, and will be, will be enforced during, before, during, or after school hours on all school property, including the school bus, school functions, or events held at other locations. The policy also applies to any off-campus activity that causes or threatens to cause a substantial or detrimental disruption at school or interferes with the rights of students, employees, or third parties to be free from a hostile school environment, taking into consideration the totality of the circumstances on and off campus. The Millis Public Schools will promptly investigate all incidents of harassment, violence, or discrimination that are known or reasonably should known by the Millis Public Schools, including any complaints or reports, whether formal or informal, verbal or written, based on a student's, a student's, district employees, or third party's actual perceived protected class status. The district will adhere to the Millis Public Schools' non-discrimination/anti-harassment procedures for filing a complaint for discrimination, harassment, or violence on account of actual perceived protected class status, and will take appropriate action to respond to those incidents, which may include disciplinary action against any student or district employee who is found to be, who is found to have violated this policy. Appropriate administrative and staff follow-up can be provided for targets and offenders of harassment, violence, and discrimination. An employee who receives such complaint otherwise becomes aware or personally observes possible harassment or discrimination based on actual perceived protected class status shall intervene whether it is safe to do so and immediately report it to the district's discrimination/harassment complaint official or the principal of the relevant school center. The district discrimination/harassment compliance official for the Millis Public Schools is the director of student services for these programs and areas, Title II in Section 504, Title VI, and Title VII, Title IX, and Age. Each, each principal will serve as the building-level coordinator for complaints or discrimination or harassment based on actual perceived protected classes. If one of the, if one of the discrimination/harassment officials is the person alleged to be engaged in discrimination/harassment, the complaint shall be filed with one of the alternate officials or building principal.
Age. Age. Age discrimination is implied.
All right. Okay. The first reading was on May 24th, 2016, and the second reading was on May 24th, 2016, the third reading was tonight, June 21st, 2016.
So I make a motion to adopt policy 1.16, non-discrimination as read.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion to adopt the 1.16 policy of non-discrimination as read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Policy 1 dot 16 dot 2.
Mr. Chair. Make a motion to consider the third reading, policy 1.16.2, equal educational opportunity policy.
Second.
They moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 1 dot 16.2, equal educational opportunities. In recognition of the diversified characteristics and needs of our students and the keen desire to be responsive to them, the Millis School Committee will make every effort to protect the dignity of the students as individuals. It also will offer careful consideration and sympathetic understanding of their personal feelings and equal opportunities to students, particularly with reference to their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability. To accomplish this, the committee and its staff will make every effort to comply with a letter in the spirit of federal law in the Massachusetts Equal Educational Opportunities Law, which prohibit discrimination in public school admissions and programs. The Massachusetts Equal Educational Opportunities Law reads as follows: No child shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and course of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. This policy will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity in school admissions, admissions to courses, course content, guidance, and extracurricular and athletic activities. All implementing provisions issued by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in compliance with this law will be followed. First reading was May 24th, 2016, second reading was May 24th, 2016, third reading was evening, June 21st, 2016.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion to adopt policy 1.16.2, equal educational opportunities as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Policy 5 dot 10 dot 14, revised bullying policy.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to read the, just read it.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to do, to conduct the third reading of policy 5.10.14, bullying prevention.
Second.
Move and second.
Okay, all right. 5.10.14, bullying prevention. The Millis Public Schools is believed to provide a safe, positive, and productive educational environment where students can achieve the highest academic standards. No student shall be subjected to harassment, intimidation, bullying, or cyberbullying. Bullying is reviewed, used by one or more students or school staff members in a written, verbal, electronic expression, or a physical act or gesture, or any combination thereof directed at a target that causes physical or emotional harm to the target or damage to the target's property, places a target in reason with fear of harm to him or herself or of damage to his/her property, creates a hostile environment at school for the target, infringes on the rights of the target at school, or materially and substantially disrupts the education process or the orderly operation of the school. Cyberbullying means bullying through the use of technology or any electronic communication, which shall include but shall not be limited to any transfer of signs, signals, writing, images, sounds, data, or intelligence of any nature transmitted in whole or unparted by a wire, radio, electromagnetic, or photo-electronic or photo-optical system, including but not limited to electronic mail, internet communications, instant messages, or facsimile communications. Cyberbullying shall also include the creation of a webpage or blog which the creator assumes the identity of another person and knowingly impersonates another person as the author or posted content or messages. If the creation or impersonation creates any of the conditions enumerated in the definition of bullying. Cyberbullying shall also include the distribution of electronic means of communication to more than one person or the posting of material or an electronic medium that may be accessed by one or more persons. If the distribution or posting creates any of the conditions enumerated in the definition of bullying. Bullying and cyberbullying may occur in and out of school, during and after school hours at home, and in locations outside of the home. When bullying and cyberbullying are alleged, to full cooperation, assistance from parents and families are expected for the purpose of this policy. Whenever the term bullying is used, it is to denote either bullying or cyberbullying. Bullying is prohibited on school grounds and property immediately adjacent to school grounds. At school sponsors, school-related activities, functions, or programs where, whether on or off school grounds, at school bus stops, and school buses or other vehicles owned, leased, to use by the school district or through the use of technology or an electronic device owned, leased, to use by the Millis Public Schools. Bullying and cyberbullying are prohibited at a location, activity, function, or program that is not school-related or through the use of technology or electronic device that is owned, leased, or used by Millis Public Schools. If the acts or acts and questions create a hostile environment at school for the target, infringe on the rights of the target at school, and do a materially substantial or disruptive education process or the orderly operation of a school. Prevention and intervention plan. Superintendent and/or his/her designated shall oversee the development of a prevention and intervention plan in consultation with all the district's stakeholders, which may include teachers, school staff, professional support personnel, school volunteers, administrators, community representatives, local enforcement agencies, students, parents, and guardians, consistent with the requirements of this policy, as well as the state and federal laws. The bullying prevention and intervention plan shall be reviewed and updated at least biannually. The school principal is responsible for the implementation and oversight of the bullying prevention and implementation plan within his or her school reporting. Students who believe they are targeted by bullying, observe an active bullying, or who have reasonable grounds believe that these behaviors are taking place, are encouraged to report incidents to a member of the school staff. The target shall have or not be subject to discipline for failing to report bullying. The school staff shall report the incident to the school principal or his/her designated. Each school shall have a means for non-miss reporting by students of incidents of bullying. No formal disciplinary action shall be taken solely on the basis of an anonymous report. Any student who knowingly makes a false accusation of bullying shall be subject to disciplinary action. Parents or guardians or members of the community are encouraged to report an incident of bullying or retaliation as soon as possible to any school staff member. School staff members must report the incident to the school principal or his/her designated. A member of a school staff shall immediately report any instance of bullying or retaliation that the staff member has witnessed or become aware of to the school principal or his/her designated. Investigation procedures. The school principal or his/her designated upon receipt of a viable report shall promptly contact the parents or guardians of a student who has been the alleged target or alleged perpetrator of bullying. The actions being taken to prevent further acts of bullying shall be discussed. The school principal or a designated shall promptly investigate the report of bullying using a bullying/cyberbullying report form, which may include interviewing the alleged target, alleged perpetrator, staff members, students, and/or witnesses. Support staff shall assess an alleged target's needs for protection, create and implement a safety plan that shall restore a sense of safety for that student. Confidentiality shall be used to protect a person who reports bullying, provides information during the investigation of bullying, or is witness to or has reliable information about an act of bullying. If the school principal or a designated determines that bullying has occurred, he or she shall take appropriate disciplinary action. If it is believed that a criminal act has occurred, or criminal charges may be pursued against the perpetrator, the principal shall consult with the school's resource officer and the superintendent to determine if criminal charges are warranted. If it is determined that criminal charges are warranted, the local law enforcement agency shall be notified. The investigation shall be completed within 14 school days from the date of the report. The parents or guardians shall be contacted upon completion of the investigation, informed that the results include whether the allegations are found to be factual, whether violation of this policy is found, or whether disciplinary action has or shall be taken. At a minimum, the principal or his/her designated shall contact the parents or guardians as to assess the investigation on a weekly basis. Disciplinary actions for students who have committed an act of bullying or retaliation shall be in accordance with district disciplinary policies. Discipline may arrange for warnings to detentions to suspensions, balancing the need for accountability with the need to teach appropriate behavior. The school principal will inform the parents or guardians of the victim about Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's problem resolution system, the process for seeking assistance, or file a claim through the problem resolution system. Each school shall document any incidents of bullying that is reported per this policy and files shall be maintained by the principal or designated. Monthly reports shall be provided to the superintendent. Confidentiality shall be maintained to the extent consistent with the school's obligations under the law. Retaliation, retaliation against a person who reports bullying, provides information during the investigation of bullying, or witnesses or has reliable information about bullying, shall be prohibited. Target assistance. The Millis Public Schools shall provide counseling or referral to appropriate services, including guidance, academic intervention, protection to students, both targets and perpetrators affected by bullying, training and assessment. Annual training shall be provided for school employees and volunteers who have significant contact with students in preventing, identifying, responding, and reporting incidents of bullying. Age-appropriate, evidence-based instruction on bullying prevention shall be incorporated and included. in curriculum for allocated to 12 students, vulnerable students. The Middle's Public Schools recognizes certain students may be more vulnerable to becoming a target of bullying or harassment based on actual perceived differentiating characteristics, including race, color, religion, ancestry, national, origin, sex, socioeconomic status, homelessness, economic status, gender identity or expression, physical appearance, pregnant or parenting status, sexual orientation, mental, physical, developmental, or sensory disability, or by association with a person who has or is perceived to have one or more of these characteristics. The Middle's Public Schools will provide age-appropriate instruction to support vulnerable students with the skills, knowledge, and strategies needed to prevent or respond to bullying or harassment. Publication notice. Annual written notice of the relevant sections of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be provided to students and their parents or guardians in age-appropriate terms. Annual written notice of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be provided to all school staff. The faculty and staff at each school shall be retrained annually on the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan applicable to the school. Relevant sections of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan related to the duties of faculty and staff shall be included in the school employee handbook. The Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be posted on the Middle's Public Schools website. First reading, May 24th, 2016. Second reading, May 24th, 2016. Third reading, June 21st, 2016.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Padilla.
I make a motion that we adopt the Bullying Prevention Policy 5 dash 1 zero dash, no, point 1 zero point 14 as read.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration of reading of proposed Policy 5 dot 14 Pregnant Student Policy.
You make a motion, I'll read it.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chip.
I make a motion for consideration to have the third reading of Policy 5 dot 14 Pregnant Student Policy.
Mr. Chair. No, actually, second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair. Policy 5 point 14 Pregnant Students. The Middle's Public Schools wishes to preserve educational opportunities for those students who become pregnant and/or take on parenting responsibilities. The Middle's Public Schools does not discriminate against any student or exclude any student from its education program or activity, including any class or extracurricular activity on the basis of a student's pregnancy, childbirth, false pregnancy, termination of pregnancy, or recovery therefrom unless the student requests voluntarily to participate in a separate portion of a program or activity of the Middle's Public Schools. Pregnant students are permitted to remain in their regular classes and participate in extracurricular activities with non-pregnant students throughout their pregnancy and after giving birth. They are permitted to return to the same academic and extracurricular program as before the reading. The Middle's Public Schools does not require a pregnant student to obtain the certification of a physician that the student is physically and emotionally able to continue in school. The Middle's Public Schools will provide reasonable accommodations and home instruction for pregnant students to the extent such accommodations are provided to students with other temporary medical conditions. Every effort will be made to see that the educational program of the student is disrupted as little as possible, that health counseling services as well as instruction are offered, that return to school after leave is encouraged, and that every opportunity to complete high school is provided. The Middle's Public Schools will excuse a student's absence because of pregnancy or childbirth for as long as the student's doctor deems the absence medically necessary. If the student has a complaint of discrimination or harassment based on pregnancy or parental status, he or she may file a complaint using those harassment and discrimination grievance procedures. First reading, May 24th, 2016. Second reading, May 24th, 2016. Third reading, June 21st, 2016.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve 5 point 14 Pregnant Student's Policy.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to accept the donation from Medtronic Charity Trust on behalf of Heather Knight in the amount of $1,288.25.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the donation from Medtronic Charity Trust on behalf of Heather Knight in the amount of $1,288.25.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration to approve revisions in the high school handbook.
Mr. Chair, on behalf of Mr. Mulaney, who couldn't be here tonight, there is a slight change to the high school handbook. On page 11, it currently states, "The student with the highest weighted GPA at the end of third term of senior year will be the valedictorian, and the student with the second highest GPA will be the salutatorian." The proposed change is to insert cumulative, cumulative weighted GPA, and add a sentence that states, "A student must be enrolled at Milis High School for a minimum of four consecutive semesters and the entirety of the student's senior year to be considered for either distinction." This is, the rationale is so that a student moving into Milis in his or her senior year would, it would prohibit them from becoming valedictorian or salutatorian because we cannot guarantee the rigor of the courses from the high school which they are transferring. And also, it would prohibit somebody who chooses to graduate early from being valedictorian or salutatorian. We have not, as Mr. Mulaney states, we have not had any issues with this, but in speaking with his other principals and his jobalite groups, it is something we feel that is prudent to have included in our handbook.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Padilla.
I make a motion to, to change the high school handbook, the 2016 to 2017 high school handbook around the valedictorian and salutatorian selection process.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration to approve revision to the middle school handbook.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Nolton has provided you with edits in blue for the handbook. The edits are not substantive, but it had been quite a while since certain wording of the middle school handbook had been changed, and some of it is just rewording, some of it is to clarify for you, but there are not substantive changes. Ms. Nolton, for the principal of the middle school.
Just, she did it on her own, or was it with consultation with you?
Yes, she and I went over the changes, and I approved of them. Some of it is updating the language. There is one change where students, in order to be dismissed, rather than being able to call their parents and say, "Come, pick me up," they must, if it's for a medical reason, go to the nurse, the school nurse. There is also the addition, you'll note, on prohibited substances on...
I just, I mean, that seemed to be a lot of changes there.
Yes, but they, as I said, they're not substantive in nature. She has revised the description of the student support team to include our tiers, which had not been included before. She did add, yeah, we, for example, intramurals. She changed that section, the title, to sports, because we have middle school sports. We do not have intramurals. Dances are now open, or she put the language in to reflect the rule we've always had that dances are open to only Milis middle school students.
Mr. Chair.
So it's including, including rules that were not captured here before.
I don't know what that...
From the dismissal?
Just, I don't, some of the language there looks kind of...
Students must, if they're, rather than calling home directly and saying, "Please come, pick me up," they need to go through the nurse if they're sick, or the office.
Nancy, if we do not approve the changes as outlined tonight, what impact does this have? When does this get, when does this get disseminated? Does it get disseminated over the summer?
It does need to go to the printer, so...
So when, when is the absolute drop date? If we did this in our July meeting, would this suffice?
I think it might impact the printing.
Don't we just print it like this? Do they do a hard copy?
We used to put it in the agenda, the student agenda book, and I will have to check on that. The agenda is where the copy is. We can, for example, approve it or send it to the printer as is and then do an endendum.
No, that's just not, that's not the best approach.
Is there a concern on one specific, one, or does the committee just want more time to evaluate?
I'd like to look at it.
Did you not get it in the package last week?
Well, these are highlighted what's changed.
Yeah, what we sent was this format as well. But I, I think, I believe on our agenda tonight is setting other school committee dates, so I can invite Mrs. Nolton back to address any questions you might have.
I mean, I, I don't, Nancy, with all due respect, it said there isn't any subs and there's changes here, but it looks like there's a heck of a lot of changes, or additions. So, I mean, I don't know, I'm just looking at it briefly. That's just my first impression.
I'd like the opportunity just to be able to take a look at it, and then if I have questions, to be able to do it even, just to be able to ask those questions of Nancy and Maureen, if we could.
We can leave this for our next meeting.
And perhaps, prior to, so if the committee can send your questions in advance, so Ms. Nolton can prepare her rationale. She was unable to be here tonight, that would be helpful.
And maybe, I mean, even if we, people can get questions when they can, and we can get the responses back, and then depending on when our meeting is and whether the questions are satisfied or not, we have to ask her to come, or if she's not available, then we can do it that way.
All right. Next is consideration to approve contract for Maureen Nolton for fiscal 16 through night. So, as most people are aware, Maureen Nolton accepted a position as middle school principal last year. We did a one-year contract with her as if being her first-year principal role. It gave us and her an opportunity to evaluate whether it was a fit for both. Maureen's done a very good job in her first year here, and we have come to a settlement on a three-year contract establishing a salary for fiscal 17. That puts her in mid-range position with surrounding districts, including comparing to not only geographic regions, but the so-called DART districts in other areas. The FY 18 and 19 increase is 3%. So, in motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Padilla.
I make a motion to approve the middle school principal Maureen Nolton's three-year contracts effective July 1st, 2017 as outlined.
2016.
I'm sorry, 2016. FY 17, commencing July 1st.
Second.
Good move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to approve the contract for Jody Cleary for fiscal 16 through fiscal 20.
Again, Jody, as she hopefully knows, is very much appreciated by us and by Nancy in the work she does during the day and helping us evenings and whenever else we're in need of assistance. We have a contract for Jody for years that recognizes some market adjustments and has annual increase fiscal 17 of 5%, 18 of 5%, 19 of 3, and 20 fiscal 20 of 3, which again, in evaluation of surrounding and area towns is...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dory.
I make a motion to approve Jody Cleary's contract as outlined in the memorandum.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Absolutely.
Motion carries. All right, next, there's all of our action items for the night. No student representative, our teacher representatives, et cetera. Superintendent's report, June enrollment.
Mr. Chair, I have the June enrollment, which reflects, some of our students have moved out of district, and as is often the case, families may want to move to the new state or district in order for their children to meet people. So we have a lower enrollment by three students who have left the district. Our choice numbers stay the same. So our total enrollment for, actually, it's not, I'll have to quickly add it up. 69 plus 23 is 1,392 students, yes. Thank you.
Figuring.
I have to, I'd like to comment on the lovely grade eight graduation last night, and congratulate our eighth graders who will be continuing on to high school. It is a large class. It's our largest class of 123 students.
I was expecting a grit conversation, but I didn't hear that from you. Although grit was said twice.
By the student?
Yes. Now by, by, by Principal Nolton, she said grit.
So then the student.
She did.
Who did a fabulous job on her speech.
You handed out grit money? Is that what it was? Can I keep my daughter in eighth grade? I don't want her to go to high school.
All right. Channel 4, future meetings. So, based on everybody's availability, the one Tuesday in July that everyone's here is July 5th? I don't know.
July 5th?
Yeah. I don't know if...
I'm not here July 5th.
You're not?
No. Go one without me.
No, you didn't say the 5th.
I didn't even say the 5th. You asked one.
Oh, when, you said you are available. Okay, that's right. So, there is none Tuesday in July.
Who says we need to do Tuesday?
We don't.
Sunday evening, after worship.
All right, so...
Should we go back to the drawing board instead of trying to do it here?
Yeah, I'll go back and...
My preference would be a Monday or a Tuesday, if possible. Obviously, Tuesday's not going to work.
All right. We can go to work. All right. Yeah, and I am waiting for a response from the selectmen on a joint meeting. The date that they had thrown out originally was next Tuesday, June 28th.
Mr. Chair, we need to get notice out to the community.
I sent them an email this morning. I will follow up tomorrow. I'm actually going to follow up with a phone because if it is going to be next Tuesday, it also has to be posted by...
Yeah, we're up against the clock.
By Friday, so it was my understanding from the meeting last Wednesday that two of the three were available and they were going to...
Two of the three were in the room, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so, so if I don't go back from any of them by tomorrow, I will follow up with a call to see who I can track down.
Mr. Chair, we should also think that it doesn't have to be a required joint meeting, it would be nice for a joint meeting, but quite honestly, I, we're slipping into summer, and if we need to do an endorsement meeting with the presentation by the project managers and the architects, I think we need to take that into consideration. I prefer to do a joint meeting, I think the optics of that and the formality of it, it looks better, but how long are we going to wait? I know you, I know you're trying.
Subcommittee reports, school building committee.
Mr. Chair, as many people know, the elementary school building committee met last Wednesday and picked the preferred option of option four, which is technically 1. C3, but it was the fourth option as outlined. It was one of the new school building options. It was a unanimous vote, and in fact, Mr. Clacco took feedback and input from all members of the elementary school building committee, not all our voting members, then took a vote with the voting members and actually went to the audience, and a couple people, not too many, but a couple people responded. So, the, the next submission to the MSBA, it's kind of gone back and forth, will at the latest be in August, it potentially could be in July. When we moved back the submission, it kind of changed kind of the deadlines, so the, the next submission will be the preferred, the preferred option that we put forward, and then once they approve, once the MSBA approves, then the architects will then start to go and bring the plans to, what are the plans right now, around 20% maybe, is that what they said?
10.
10%. They will then bring the plans to a 60 to 70%, and then they won't complete the plans until a decision is made. And to echo some of the concerns about traffic, the traffic was a significant concern for the working group, and in fact, we had a whole additional meeting where we brought out a traffic engineer, there was already traffic engineers, we brought them out with specific questions and concerns about the direct impact on the neighbors in that area, and there were several options around traffic engineering, around the actual construction of a two-way road, then changing the flow of certain roads, keeping roads open to residents only, restricting turns. So, the last working group meeting, which was a substantial meeting of almost three hours, almost all of it was around traffic and traffic concerns, and we are going into this looking to try to, to limit the impact on our neighbors and abutters as much as possible. The bottom line is the site, although it's not substantially far away, that site is the better site versus the other new school building site. There's a, to take the, to put the new building on the gnaw was going to require a tremendous amount of site work, which we are, every project goes over the site work that's reimbursed by the state, so there was going to be cost. The actual structure of the building was, although the layout is fairly the same, but just the way it laid on the site, it wasn't going to be as good and meet the educational program as that other site, but I will, I want to say that we are taking in, the traffic was the biggest concern we had around those, between those two new buildings.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to correspondence. First is a letter of retirement from Kathy Tosi.
As, as you know, Kathy Tosi has been the director of the extended day program for many, many years, and has done a wonderful job, taking it from a very small program to a program that serves over, well, over 200 students now. In 1996, there was a staff of five and only 60 children, and now 27, a staff of 27, 200 students a year, and Kathy will be very much missed and has huge shoes for somebody to fill. So we will, I'm meeting with her tomorrow to post the position, I think actually it's already posted, maybe not, so to finalize the job description, post that, and we'll be seeking somebody with very many skills because it takes a tremendous amount of organization, great people skills, as well as financial skills. So, we're going to miss Kathy. There's the letter for you from the official, you received the report from Mr. Mulaney on the NIESC and his staff members on the NIESC report. This is the official letter that we received May 24th from NIESC, giving the high school a very good evaluation and some recommendations that we will be addressing in the next two years. We are required to submit a two-year progress report. The, also in your packets is, we'd like to congratulate the Milis DI team that went to the global finals in Knoxville, Tennessee. One team competed, and this is the fourth year in a row that Milis has had a team competing at globals, which is amazing. The elementary team was made up of fourth and fifth graders and competed with 17,000 other participants, and they, from all over the world. That team was managed by Kendall Jones and Ben Jones. The fifth graders were Jack Borst, Joe Beret, Lily Cassidy, and fourth graders Jackson Phong and Juliana Roy. They were the dangerous ducks, and they placed 34th in their division of 57 teams, and had a wonderful time and represented as well. Milis Midway News had an article about Max Moran, a senior who's graduating as our catcher on the baseball team, a very good article. They did a nice job covering the parent prep program for parents around substance abuse, and an informational evening that we hosted both for middle and high school parents and a second one for elementary parents. Our track team did wonderfully, especially the four-by-four relay team that participated at the state level. There's an article on the wonderful job they did, and an article on our salutatorian
School community announcements, Steve?
Not necessarily an announcement, but I ran into Mrs. Tosi in the superintendent's office this afternoon, and having two kids that have gone through the program, I thanked her for the hard work that she's done for the district. She runs a very good program. As I told her, she will be missed, but I'm happy for good things for her in the future, but I think the program is something that the district should be proud of, that it offers a reasonably priced service, that's, it's a step up that starts from, you know, the pre-K, the extended days, it's all encompassing, and I think it's, it's a good service that we provide with, under the great tutelage of Kathy, and I just think that she will be missed, but it's a good things for her in the future.
Nothing. Other than congratulations, by the way, this is on TV. All the schools will be done for the year. Middle school, high school done today, and Clyde Brown with another day and a half left. Going, no major new business. We have a working session to discuss the budget transfers for 16, and then we'll adjourn to executive session for contract negotiation with teachers. As of right now, we don't have another, another set meeting, but we will, when we have those, we'll publicize and post the most necessary.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn to a working session followed up by an executive session, not to come back into open session.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much.